Thank you for this thing that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to be right where we are, Lord. I just pray that you will be with us as we give this meeting, that you'll watch our version. And you'll give us guidance, Lord, that we may direct this county in accordance to your will, Lord. Do this in all that, in your name, I'll pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of minutes for June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Is there any discussion, questions? Now we'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not present. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. So that motion has been approved. This time we'll ask for reports from the county of districts.
District one don't have anything to report, Mr. Sanders.
Let's remember DJ's grandmother, I believe they had to take her to the hospital today, and that's why he's not present tonight, so.
Um, I have nothing to say.
We got rain, but it's been on some rare occasions, so. It's not raining. Everything's good.
I'd like to thank everyone that came out to bridge Nina, out at Big Mans, and under Corporal Bill Hallman. They had a great turnout, and we appreciate this for the county that has supported the family over this past year, because it has been tragic for them and for us at the same time, so, thank you. This time we have a public presentation. I'd like to recognize Ms. Sandra Callahan, DJJ County Manager, to discuss, uh, raise, erase the age to all, and its impact on the growth of the elderly.
Thank you. Good evening. Again, as I said, um, my name is Sandra Callahan, and I'm the county director for DJJ. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for, um, being a wonderful partner with us for so many years, and providing office space, and just opening up the doors in the community for us to serve the youth in this area. We really appreciate that. And I want to be as brief as I possibly can this evening, um, in combining a couple of different things. What I wanted to, uh, discuss with y'all briefly was raise the age, and I'm sure this is something that the sheriff may know, something of, uh, a little deal about. The law changed as of July one of this year. Now, the Department of Juvenile Justice is serving seventeen-year-olds as juveniles. No longer are they being charged, um, as, as adults, which means that, um, as of July one, without the funding that we were initially promised by the legislatures, um, DJJ has taken on about five thousand additional, uh, youth from the probation and parole. So, uh, we, we are growing, and, uh, but really, it, what, and what that means is, is just exactly what it says to what I provided to you guys, then, is that we're moving from, um, charging our juveniles up to the age of, of sixteen as juveniles. Now we're taking on those seventeen-year-olds, which means that they're going to be on probation for a couple additional years. We can have someone on probation now, up to the age of twenty-two years old, uh, which is gonna be difficult for us to kind of manage, because we, we may be having children who are off in college that we're going to have to, um, follow and, and provide case management for. So raise the age has, has, um, provided us with a lot more juveniles than we had originally anticipated having. And I, I say all of that to say this, um, I know that, um, just like any other agencies, that the county is having some growing pains, and, and I understand that you guys are, are going to be taking, uh, using the conference room over the building that we use as far as the caller registration or something of that nature. And, um, I would just want to share that that is the room that we used, that we've shared with you guys over the years to provide intervention and prevention to the youth in the community, and I provide some statistics along with raise the age, because that shows the number of juveniles that we serve in this area, uh, and what they are being referred for. But as I said, we've u- we've used that room in the past to provide, to have groups and provide prevention and intervention. And, um, as I know, that, that, that is going away, and we've lost, we also lost another space earlier in, uh, earlier, uh, either late last year sometime, and because, uh, I think some heating and air conditioning issues. But we were provided with a, with one office, but at that time, when we lost, we lost two. Uh, and in doing so, we lost mental health. We lost the space for our mental health person, so we don't have, uh, any mental health serving our juveniles into Saluda County, because we don't have space. And in using the conference room, we won't have space to provide prevention and intervention for these additional youth that we're gonna be serving for raise the age. And our concern is perhaps if there's, uh, any available space in the building, once you guys, uh, do what you need to do in, in making your moves and, and serving your growing pains, would there possibly be an additional space for us to provide prevention and intervention? Because we want to keep those numbers down. We don't want to have more juveniles coming into the system. And we're done, and for this new group that we're gonna be working with, we're gonna be, have to provide like a PTI program, so we're developing our own programs, but we need somewhere to serve these new group of individuals that we're going to be working with in the future. I'll entertain any questions for Ms. Sandra.
Um, we will definitely take under consideration the space issue. This was something that was put on us that we haven't compensated from the state, just like you did, so.
Right, we understand, we understand.
Right? We appreciate your time, and we accept this as information tonight. I thank you very much, Ms. Sandra. All right, and we'll move on to our old business. We'll recognize Jacob Stones, EMS Director for consideration for the fleece, the nearest ambulance.
Um, trying tonight to try to see if we purchase one, the nearest ambulance. Um, the price will, total price will be two hundred and five thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty cent. Uh, we'll be front down into four annual payments of fifty-four thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and forty cent. Also, within that, my plan would be to try to sell one of the remaining experience that we have to hopefully try to make one payment for that, and so we have to go through.
Let me get the motion on the floor, then we'll have discussion on this. Entertain a motion to purchase a nearest ambulance in around two hundred and five thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty cents and finance according to the plan submitted, our agenda package. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, how long, because we've asked this before, but to refresh all of our memory, how long do you plan to take on sales of the other ambulances? What do you?
Um, what I was going to do is, um, not to leave this in the mind, once everything got approved and we figured out more than we would actually receive this new ambulance. I would say probably about two months prior to receiving that, we could put it up on, on Dove deals to see what we could get for the ambulance.
This new, uh, vehicle, would it come with a box?
Yes, sir. It's, um, fully staffed, with, uh, also with a stretcher, a new stretcher and everything, so.
You said fully staffed, we're getting staffed.
That's the next one.
That's, 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 that's a later, uh, yeah, that's a better one. Um, let's see, um. Any idea what you possibly can get for this used ambulance?
Um, it's still a fairly good ambulance. Um, we kept a pretty good, uh, that spare. It only has around eighty-one thousand miles on it, um, so I really suspect that we would probably get close to, hopefully close to make the one of those fifty-four thousand miles.
Will this give us all of our ambulances, uh, across the board, then, being a day or two?
No, sir, we still have one more. Yeah, we have two spares that when we first became a county unit that we kept, that are orange and white down there, ones that we have now, um, and that would be later on, but we'd have five out of six would be the same now.
Any other questions?
If this is passed and may approve, um, when would you expect this new unit to be available, to be?
I'd probably say December, because it, all this has to be specked out, and the way they will do it is, once we say that, uh, the county approves it, it'll be sent to the nearest. They'll have to get the Dodge chassis, and they'll have to run all the specs, get everything, then they'll have to go through their plan process, bill, um, striker, have to come up, whatever, they can get a new stretcher and all of that stuff, so roughly about six months it takes to get everything done.
And it's gonna be uniform, basically, with the other new units?
It'll be the exact same. Power lift on it? Um, I opted off the power lift, and the only reason why I opted off the power lift is it's not forty-five thousand dollars.
Now, yeah, we're giving a reason. The payment, would that, that then take, we don't have to make a payment until we take possession of the vehicle, is that what I understood?
Correct, correct, yes, correct. It would, um, I know the quote that y'all have from the TCF Finance Company says twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, but more than likely, if it's done in December, that first payment will be done in January, because the last three ambulances that we purchased, um, we received them in January and the first payment to make in January, which also will make the last payments on all of our ambulances by January this year.
How many miles will it run in here?
Average about thirty to forty. Those, those ambulances put in service, and January twenty-sixteen, they have about a hundred thirty to a hundred forty thousand miles on it. Just in thirty to forty, per, excuse, per change, yeah.
Any other questions? Now we'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. Thank you. All right, we'll entertain, or go to the new business. This time I'll entertain a motion to ratify the resolution as presented to Tina M. Shealy, who recently retired as Saluda County Treasurer. Do I have a motion?
A vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Hey, so you're good.
Absolutely. Call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. Ms. Shealy, would?
Thank you.
How many years was that?
Seventeen. As the county treasurer.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution recognizing Captain Toby Horn for his heroic acts on April fifth, two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
So, do I have a second? Any discussion? Now we'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote?
Yes.
Not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. District one?
You look different, just so I make fun of you. State of South Carolina, County of Saluda, resolution, whereas Captain, Captain Toby G. Horn entered a business, burning residence on April fifth, two thousand nineteen, and whereas Captain Horn entered the burning residence without concern for his own life and safety in an attempt to save the life of a child. And whereas Captain Horn located the child in a crib upstairs and carried the child to the EMS personnel who were stationed outside the residence. And whereas the actions of Captain Toby G. Horn on April fifth, two thousand nineteen, exhibited an effort beyond the call of duty. And whereas the county of Saluda desires to publicly commend Captain Toby G. Horn and recognize him for his heroic acts and willingness to put up a roof before his safety. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution will be presented to Captain Toby G. Horn, and that be placed in the minutes of the Saluda County Council.
When I wrote EMS and I said I started story, but I was working with Toby, you knew right then, it'll be good.
Thank you again, Toby. I'll entertain a motion for the reading on, or first reading of amendments number zero five dash nineteen in ordinance to renew the contract for fixed base operator, Saluda Camp, Saluda Sky Aviation LLC at the Saluda County Airport. Do I have a motion?
A vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Questions? Call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. This motion has passed. This time we'll recognize Jill Horn, Emergency Management Assistant Director, for to submit the application for an FAA grant.
This is the first FAA grant that we have had, I think, five years now. Um, what we're looking to do is to replace some concrete area around the main building that's been there for thirty years, it's cracked, it's got rocks going everywhere. We have rocks out on the apron area where planes are taxiing back and forth, and then to replace the taxiway. Um, I don't know whether it's for years of not being used or what, but grass has started growing up on the edges of it, it's crumbling up. We have some cracks in it that are, I'll, I showed you some, sent you some pictures, but they're pretty big cracks, and eventually it'll crack until we start growing up in it, and then of course it's gonna start crumbling. So, we're trying to get these things taken care of first, because these are, these are safety issues for us, and, you know, as I've been told by some of our pilots, if one of those planes, propellers picks up one of those rocks and slings it into their engine, it's gonna tear it up and force them to be responsible for it, because we're not maintaining the area like we should be. So, this is what we are planning to do, and this first grant that we are seeking is the planning grant to do the planning for this. Um, the total grant funds would be one hundred twenty-six thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. The FAA would fund ninety percent of that, a hundred fourteen thousand eighty-four dollars. Uh, the state and the county would provide a share of ten percent match, so, um, the state share would be six thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars, and the county match would be six thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars.
This time we'll entertain a motion. Entertain a motion to approve submission of application for the FFA, FAA grant to develop plans to reconstruct the apron area at the front of the terminal building and reconstruct the taxiway with the county's five percent match of six thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars being funded from contingency. Do I have a motion?
A vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions?
This money that you're requesting is just for the planning portion of it?
That's how the FAA does it in stages. You do a planning grant, and then, once that's done, then you do the construction grant.
Do we know what's the construction grant supposed to be?
Not yet. I mean, we're, these are estimated figures, and hopefully with the planning grant, that, you know, it wouldn't be this much to actually do what has to be done, but.
Will, will the construction, I may have heard of this in some discussion, but the construction probably won't actually take place in this year, or that it would be for a while?
It would be, um, twenty, twenty-one, probably?
Twenty twenty or twenty-one, I don't know.
All right, let me read those amounts again. Total grant funds, one hundred twenty-six thousand seven hundred sixty dollars. Uh, FAA, FAA share would be a hundred fourteen thousand eighty-four dollars. State share would be six thousand three hundred thirty-eight. County share would be six thousand three hundred thirty-eight. Is that correct? Any other questions?
Yeah. All right, so what happens in terms of the conditions of what we're planning on repairing, uh, between now and when it is repaired?
We just have to continue to pick up the rocks. If we see big rocks out there, we try and keep them off of the area, and we've got some areas blocked off where planes cannot, now the taxiway is being used, but as far as the area around the building, we block off so they can't get into that area, and we try, like I said, keep things as clean as possible. Keep rocks off the side into the grass, just whatever we can do to keep the rocks out there.
All right, we'll call for a vote at this time. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. So, this motion has passed. This time we'll recognize Regina Turner, Financial Service Coordinator, for consideration of adoption of the purchasing card policy and forms.
Um, the request for council to approve the purchasing card policy, um, which was attached in your address, as it's.
This is something we also discussed in budget work sessions also. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adopt the purchasing card policy along with the forms submitted in our agenda package. Do I have a motion? So. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion? I would say this seems like a, a good move for us in being able to watch spending, purchasing, and all the others, so. Call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. Thank you, Ms. Shealy. All right, this time we'll recognize Chief Deputy Toby Horn to present, fill the vacant positions in Saluda County Sheriff's Office.
Good evening. Uh, we're asking to fill the vacancies at Sheriff's Office. We have, currently we're holding three positions that are already allotted to the Sheriff's Office and currently in our budget. Uh, these positions are crucial, that we fill them pretty soon, uh, because it's taking a little manpower, it's really, but these positions were already allotted to us. We're asking to fill them. Uh, we think we've got some prospects already available.
Entertain a motion to fill these, fill the three vacant positions in Sheriff's Office. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? The funds are in our nineteen twenty budget for three positions, so. All right, no questions. Um, I'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two, how do you vote? Not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. All right, Chief, you also want to present temporary fill in the vacant SRO position in the Saluda County Sheriff's Office.
Yes, sir, uh, I'm requesting that we fill the SRO position that we currently have for the elementary school that we have up here. Uh, one of our employees has been deployed on military leave, and they could appear for one year, uh, no more than one year, and then that person will leave after that.
I'll entertain a motion to temporary fill a vacant SRO position in the Sheriff's Office. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and the funds are in our budget for nineteen twenty for the SRO, SRO position. The temporary SRO will only serve until such time as the full-time SRO returns from deployment. Now, let me ask, um, will this person, are, are they gonna be automatically brought on now, or will this come closer to school time, or how will that?
It depends on who we have available and ready. Uh, I think there is some interest already there, but we'll bring them on soon, since I can get some, I'd love to have them for the school SRO position.
So if you hire someone new, they'll have to have special training for this position?
They apply as one officer, and there will be some SRO training.
All right, any other questions?
Um, I, I know we split this with the, with the school district, and I'm looking at the, uh, salary amount here. Is that the full amount of the salary, or is that just a county's proportion?
Yeah, I'd have to refer that to Ms. Sandra, because I really don't know exactly what this money is for. If you're talking about the bottom line figure will be presented, or? I would say that would be from whatever August first is through May thirty-first of next year, when she comes back off deployment, that would be full of that.
But that's, that's, so who would essentially be responsible for half of that?
All right, any other questions? District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. Thank you, Chief. This time we'll recognize Assistant Jill Administrator, Lorraine Kelly, to present filling vacant positions at the Saluda County Detention Center.
Good evening. Uh, we're requesting to fill the three vacant positions that we have in our budget for this year. That's already there. These positions, um, is available, and they will complete the number of staff needs that the corporate purchase that laid on us to fill. And, um, they're open right now, and we have this many left to replace, so we're needing it for our staffing needs, and of course, like I said, it's already in the budget for this year.
This time I'll entertain a motion to fill three vacant positions at the Saluda Detention Center. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any questions? And I'll restate, these are funds that are in our, already in our budget for nineteen twenty, and also, we have a certain requirement that has to be filled per the Department of Corrections, so. All right? Any more questions or comments? We'll call for the vote. District one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here. District three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
And I ask chairman to vote yes. Thank you, Ms. Shealy. All right, we'll recognize EMS Director Jacob Stones to present. to present, fill in the vacant positions in purchasing and service.
Back there again. Um, requesting to fill the two transport EMT slots and one part-time EMT slot, and it also allotted to us this year. Um, I'd like to fill it pretty quickly, because the transport EMTs are the one who does the nursing home transports and the dialysis transports. A lot, probably.
Okay. Entertain a motion to fill the two vacant EMT positions for a transport truck in the EMS department. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Alright, and again, the funds are allocated in the nineteen, twenty budget. Any questions? I do, uh, are these recent, recently vacated positions?
One of them was vacated due to a military leave, um, he was also being employed for a year, but, um, he gets back, we should have somebody at paramedic school, and he can go back into that position. So that's vacant, the transport position. And one of them was recently, the other one was recently due to somebody leaving to go back to school.
Okay. Alright, so, brought up a question for me.
Is it?
So we're filling the two vacant spots, and you've got someone that's possibly coming back, or what are you gonna do with it?
Whenever he comes back off military leave in a year, Matthew should be finished with paramedic, drug class, and he would fill it to a, sorry, he would fill it to a paramedic slot, and that would still have an EMT slot open that, when he comes off military leave, he can fill back into.
Okay.
So we'll be adding, adding a position?
Yes.
That's, that's, thank you for being direct.
That's what I was trying to get, ask.
No, it, it'll, we don't wanna create a new position.
That's what we're trying to prevent from doing. Okay. Alright, any other questions, discussion? Call for the vote, district one, how do you vote?
Yes.
Two is not here, district three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, as chairman, vote yes. Second. Alright? Uh, Mr. Stones, if you please, return to the voting. We're not finished with you yet.
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, now for the EMT part-time position that you mentioned. We'll entertain a motion to fill one part-time EMT position in the EMS department. Uh, do I have a motion?
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? And again, the funds are allocated in the budget for this. Any questions for?
Again, this is just filling a vacant position.
Fill a vacant position.
Alright, we'll call for the vote, district one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here, district three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, as chairman, vote yes. Thank you. This time we'll recognize Mr. Jacob Schumpert, Solid Waste Coordinator, fill vacant positions in Solid Waste Department.
Uh, appreciated, y'all, uh, I've got sixteen, uh, slots for, of regular attendants. I call them, I guess, be part-time, full-time. I have, I requested one, possibly two. I got word today that my second one's probably not coming back due to other reasons, so I'd like to go ahead, I've talked about, maybe using my relief down there, so I'd like to go ahead and fill two, uh, slots. And I also have two lead workers, but one of those, one of those who go back to school, she teaches, so, and then I would start, if you need to fill, you can position.
Okay, so it is two positions you're requesting?
Really two positions, I would imagine.
Yes. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to fill two regular attendant positions in the Solid Waste Department. Do I have a motion? So, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, and the funds are allocated in the nineteen, twenty budget. Is there any other questions?
Uh, may I make one more question? Uh, last week, July fourth, I told y'all during the budget about the number of cars we have come through our centers. Last year, the week of July fourth, we had about three thousand cars come through that. This past week, we had forty-three hundred cars come through our centers. Uh, keeping an eye on that traffic circle. Uh, that's up about three hundred, like it usually does, a couple weeks. We've been organizing, we haven't been growing that quite, unless there are other numbers. But, uh, something I'd like to be all concerned about, but also, is at the traffic circle, the new housing development coming up down there, of course, it's off some a little bit, but a hundred twenty houses, we probably expect another two hundred more to come down. So keep that in mind, I'll probably up there asking some at that time, but I appreciate, I want to tell them where we're going with that.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. He says forty-three hundred.
Forty-three hundred and twenty cars came through last week.
Alright, we'll call for the vote, district one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here, district three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, as chairman, vote yes. Thank you. Alright, this time I'll entertain a motion for council to go into executive session for section thirty dash four dash seventy of South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy-six as amended to receive legal advice on a petition to close a county road in agreement with the South Carolina State Elections Commission. Do I have a motion?
Uh-huh.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Now, we'll call for the vote, district one, how do you vote?
Yes.
District two is not here, district three, how do you vote?
Yes.
District four, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I, as chairman, vote yes. We are now in a